I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Present.
Morgan?
Present.
Nordentoff?
Here.
Path? Pasek? Ware? Sula?
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held back on August third. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve it submitted would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Second, move by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Nordentoff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next item is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on August seventeen. Uh, any questions, changes, or comments? If not, a motion to approve is submitted would be in order?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Campbell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nordentoff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda is a series of public hearings. Um, all of them are amendments to the, uh, the zoning ordinance text. For purposes of protocol, I consider them all as one item for swearing in and everything.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll discuss all of them and then have separate motions.
Okay, separate motions, but we're gonna treat it as one public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Who's presenting? Clara?
Yep, so we'll start with the sign amendment. Um, with more stores offering online ordering and pickups, there's been a surge in requests for drive-up parking stalls and signs. And staff is proposing to add a new drive-up parking stall signage classification for these types of signs. The maximum height proposed is seven feet, which matches the height of many accessible parking signs across town. Uh, the state requires that these signs are at least five feet tall and does not provide a maximum. Staff has seen an increase of these types of signs and have noticed that most exceed that five foot height allowed in our current code. The seven-foot height allows better visibility when larger vehicles are parked in the, in the drive-up spaces. And staff is also proposing that no permits be required for these signs, similar to other parking lot signs, as long as they're not illuminated and do not eliminate any accessible stalls or reduce the overall number of parking stalls. A permit would only be required if the signs are proposed to be illuminated. And if there's any reduction in the number of parking spaces, including accessible stalls, staff would also require a review of a parking plan to ensure that code is still being met. And then, uh, also, staff is proposing to change the height of parking lot instructional signs from five feet to seven feet to keep the height of all parking lot signs consistent, whether they are accessible parking signs, instructional signs, or drive-up signs. So, um, for, under directional signs, section B, we're simply asking to change the five foot to seven foot for the sign height of the, uh, directional parking lot signs. And then, we're looking at adding a section C that would say, "Drive-up parking stall signage may be installed. Any reduction in parking will require separate review. Such signs may be illuminated, but they may not exceed four square feet in area or seven feet in height."
Clara, I'm a little confused on, on the language on that part.
Okay.
Because it says, the overall heading is, it says thirteen point three signs allowed without sign permits?
Mm-hmm.
And up in your text notes, or staff notes, it says that if it's illuminated, it would require a building permit. But then, part C there seems to say that they can be illuminated even though it's in the without sign permit section.
So, that language is actually very similar. We didn't put it in the, did we put it in the actual staff? No, it's gone.
It's, it's in the entry, the entry paragraph to that whole section. It says that permits are not needed except in the case of illuminated signs. And then it, it's in, at the very beginning for all.
So we're just not seeing that part here?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But it-
It's, it's in there.
They wouldn't be required, um, unless there was the illuminated component. And that's consistent with the other directional signs as well, that no permit is required unless there is that aspect of them.
Okay. And, and, and I drove by all four of the examples that you included in the staff notes. I, I didn't bring a tape measure, but some of them seem really tall. I mean, are they all seven foot or less?
They were seven, maybe seven and a half feet. It was a little bit difficult with the tape measure that I had to measure them. But, yeah, most of them were, they were seven, if anything, seven and a half feet.
Okay. Um, 'cause I mean, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and the Kohl's in particular seemed tall to me. And, and the handicap signs by, by that area seemed tall too, but-
Mm-hmm.
But they're within the, the parameters plus or minus?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
That, that was my question. Um, but if it's already there and we're just not seeing it, then, then it's, um, then it's solved. And, and the ones that are above seven feet, will they be required to do anything once we pass this? Or there's no requirement for them to adjust the signage?
No, it would just, it would just be going forward.
Right.
Or unless they come in to modify those signs, then they would have to bring it into conformance. If they're handicap signs and they just have to meet the handicap requirement, um, I'm not sure what those are. I think they might be allowed to go up to seven and a half feet, maybe.
I mean, 'cause the, the ones by Bed Bath &amp; Beyond just kinda struck me. And I know, because we're talking about it, it's like, it puts a microscope on it and, you know, all the, all the sensitivities are there. But, um, I also noted at, at Home Depot in protect, in, in particular, they've got signs on their cart corrals. Let's say cart. And those were taller than the other signs on, on the cart corrals.
Yeah, generally, our sign code says that if you can't see the sign from, like, you know, the property line, that it's quote-unquote "not a sign." But because we get a lot of these kind of parking lot ID signs, that's why we wanna, and we always have had regulations. We don't have regulations specific to the cart corrals and stuff like that. Um, I know that in the past that Mr. Ziegler, being the zoning administrator, has made the determination that those aren't signs because they can't be seen based upon their size from property lines. But we can certainly take a look at those if we feel that we need some regulations on those. Um, you know, in terms of height or size or something like that.
Yeah, and at Target, where they got that special area that came before us, got a couple of years ago now, um, including the solar panel that's attached to it, that's pretty tall.
Oh, for the Target ones?
Yeah, that one was-
Yeah, those went through a special use permit.
So, they're, they're, they're meeting what we set out?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe that they're coming forward potentially for some additional, similar to that height with the solar panel.
Yeah, they've reached out for the second beacon, so.
Okay. And just as an aside, I noticed that Best Buy actually has their pickup in the fire lane.
Okay, I, we'll, we'll have to have code.
They have signs there now, um, that are, they're on the concrete, but they're right along-
In back of the store? Or in fro, in back of the store?
No, in the front. Yeah, right outside the front doors.
And they have it parked in the fire lane, right out front?
The, the signs themselves for their pickup are on the-
Oh, for the pickup, okay.
Yeah, are, are on the concrete on the very edge of the pavement, but it's all, it's all next to that striped off area that's supposed to be fire lane.
We'll have to, we'll have to take care of that, 'cause they can't have pickup in a fire lane.
Okay. Um, is this time I'm gonna open the floor to the public? Uh, is there anyone from the public that cares to make a comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Any other questions?
Just curious, the, the, the directional signs can only be three sque, three square feet? And the drive-up can be four square feet maximum?
So, so the directional sign that can be three square feet, those are specifically like the enter exit signs that are on the, kind of the outskirts of the property line? And usually they're shorter and smaller, just letting people know where to enter and exit. These are consistent with the other off-street parking area signs that are referenced in section B there.
Okay, unless there's any other discussion, uh, a motion to send a recommendation to the village bor, village board as presented would be in order?
Uh, motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of the Village of Gurnee for an amendment to the text of Article thirteen point three, signs allowed without a permit as proposed.
Okay, motion by Mr. Morgan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nordentoff. Uh, roll call, please?
Oh, that's me. Sorry.
I'm looking both ways too.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Clara, the next one about the PUD modifications?
Yep. Staff is proposing to strike a provision in the PUD section of the zoning ordinance that stipulates that a reduction in the number of parking spaces of up to ten or fifteen percent, sorry, of up to ten parking spaces or fifteen percent, whichever is less, is required to go through a minor PUD amendment process. This process itself is not onerous and is similar to the, uh, parking modification provision found in the Parking Chapter of the zoning ordinance. The concern is when the parking reduction request is over ten spaces or fifteen percent, uh, it would trigger a major amendment to the PUD, which is a public hearing process. And that takes on average about three months, just due to the legal notification requirements. The threshold is also pretty low for most PUDs in town. All non-PUD zoned properties have a much simpler streamlined parking modification process that they only have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board at a regular scheduling, regularly scheduled meeting for. And the Planning and Zoning Board would have the final decision-making authority. Um, so we're looking to give PUDs the same sort of streamlined process for making modifications to the number of parking spaces. And so the actual amendment is just to remove section H that says a reduction in the number of parking spaces of up to ten parking spaces or fifteen percent, whichever is less. And that would bring the requirement for PUDs, um, back to the zo, the parking section of the zoning ordinance and that parking modification process.
Any questions or comments? None on my end.
I don't have any. There's just a typo in E, I think, if that's the way. It's, it's nothing. That's all here to be changed. It just reads interesting.
Okay.
Change of in.
Oh, I, I can look if that's in the actual, uh, zoning ordinance and we can fix that if necessary.
Yeah, yep.
But that might just be a typo on our part.
And Brian, I assume this is your stand, too?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna open the floor to the public. Does anyone from the public care to make a comment? If not, I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Unless there's further discussion, a recommendation to the village board as presented would be in order?
A motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of the Village of Gurnee for an amendment to the text Article nine point six, modification to approve the final PUD plans as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Campbell. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Dave first. Um, roll call, please?
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Next one is regarding the definition of vehicle dealerships?
Yes. So, this one, uh, staff is just proposing a clarification on the definition of vehicle dealership. The definition currently omits trucks, which is an oversight as our definition of motor vehicles includes trucks, truck trailers, and semi-trucks. Um, and so the proposed amendment would be, um, simply to add in motor vehicles, uh, I'll read the entire thing for the definition of vehicle dealership, "An establishment that sells or leases new or used motor vehicles, including but not limited to automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, and recreational vehicles." Uh, and then it continues on with the rest of the language, which says, "A vehicle dealership may maintain an inventory of the vehicles for sale or lease either onsite or at a nearby location and may provide onsite facilities for the repair and service of the types of vehicles sold or leased by the dealership."
And trucks is a defined term in the zoning ordinance?
So, motor vehicles is definitely a defined term and it lists out, um, the things that we have included here. Let me see if.
It includes trucks. We just, we, we have a petition coming before us and the attorney looked at the definition of, of vehicle sales and it doesn't have truck in there. Just to clarify it, even though our definition of motor vehicle does have truck in there, so I, we're covered, I believe, but this would just double cover us?
But in, in your lead-in paragraph there, you specifically mentioned truck trailers and semi-trailers, but, but not in, uh, the definition of general terms. Are you okay with that?
So, what we were just trying to do, our definition of motor vehicles, let me find that really quick. What we didn't wanna do is just say our definition of, or we didn't wanna say new or used motor vehicles and kind of leave out what that included, just so that the person reading that would then have to go look at the definition of motor vehicles, if that makes sense. So we just wanted to make it clear, um, that there are a number of different things, including this. If that's not included, they can always look back at that definition of motor vehicles, which includes any passenger vehicle, motorcycle, recreational vehicle, truck, truck trailer, or semi-trailer propelled or drawn by a mechanical power. And then further, there's a definition of the recreational vehicle that goes into, you know, it's not just the camper that's, uh, self-propelled and things like that.
Okay, great, thanks. Anyone else? Dave?
Seems like a typical housekeeping sort of matter, so.
Um, and, and I, I'm sorry, I, I was outside. I did not get a chance to look at it. So, if, for instance, there's a semi-truck dealer that wanted to go into where, um, any one of the vacant dealerships are, they would be automatically-
As a special use.
As a special use.
Unless it's-
Unless it's completely enclosed, but all vehicle dealerships in our commercial districts require a special use permit.
Okay.
If they're outdoor storage or sales.
Open the floor to the public. Any questions from members of the public? Okay, close the floor to the public. Um, unless there's further discussion, a recommendation, um, as presented would be in order?
Uh, motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of the Village of Gurnee for an amendment to the text of Article two point one, uh, definition of general terms as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Morgan. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Campbell. Roll call, please?
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, the next item is related to the definitions for outdoor storage yard.
Yes. So, staff is proposing text amendments to clarify the outdoor storage yard use. Uh, and note that it does not include vehicle or shipping container storage. And this is being done by changing outdoor storage yard, the name of it, to outdoor storage of materials, and then changing the definition to list out items included as materials, such as brick, stone, concrete, wood, or similar, while specifying that materials do not include vehicles and shipping containers. As the use category name change, the title and the principal use standards must be updated as well, so that's also proposed. And we just wanna let you know this amendment is in response to an occupancy permit that was issued this year for a one hundred thirty-six truck trailer storage lot on seven acres-long Morrison Drive. The property's zoned I-two and trailer storage was interpreted to be consistent with the use category of outdoor storage yard and was therefore approved as a permitted use shortly after staff became concerned about this interpretation um, as it could tie up valuable commercial and industrial land. And, uh, we were also had concerns that the village could become, uh, prime location for these facilities due to our location along the I-ninety-four tollway between Chicago and Milwaukee and that the use creates significant wear on area roads and traffic. Um, and that the use on Morrison Drive, uh, could benefit a company that's operating from another community and is then getting, that is then getting the tax benefits of the business versus, uh, Gurnee. And then also the village's strategic plan process, which was started in twenty twenty-two, uh, identifies the promotion and supporting of businesses that generate tax benefits, which this sort of use typically does not. And so, in response to all of that, the village board enacted a six-month moratorium on the processing of such applications, building permits, or occupancy certificates for outdoor storage yard. We've been researching the use, um, as a principal use on the lot and found that almost all communities in this area do not allow the use either as a permitted use or as a special use, usually for the reasons listed above, or just because it hasn't been addressed yet. And the only two communities that staff could identify that would allow such a use were Joliet, which is a major transportation hub and is pretty far from here, and then also Waukegan, which just recently, uh, started allowing for this. And they only allow it when an associated business occupies at least five hundred thousand square feet of a building within the city. And then, um, uh, based on this, we were directed by the Administration Department to clarify through zoning text amendments that this type of use wouldn't be allowed. And, uh, because of the desire to not promote businesses that do little to benefit the community in terms of tax generation, uh, staff is proposing modifications to some of the districts where the principal outdoor storage is a contemplated use. Um, and so, we are looking to change the use of outdoor storage of materials from being a permitted use to a special use in the I-two and I-three districts and then, uh, remove it from the C-three and I-one districts. And then the only other text amendment, which I noted earlier, was just changing some of the wording in the principal use standards to address the new, uh, title for the use.
Any questions or comments?
The only thing I would add is that there were some concerns about health and safety, uh, because, um, when we did the most recent amendment, it really hadn't been contemplated that you would have a lot that doesn't have necessarily an attendant or an ongoing business to regulate the activities by making this clarified, uh, and believe that this would enhance the public safety account too. Then you would not have just paved area with unattended trailers.
Well, number one, um, I'm in favor of changing all the, um, use matrix to make it special use only. Um, that way we have the ability to have oversight on this, so, so we really get a chance to make sure that every, you know, T is crossed, I is dotted, as it relates to how these are all set up and, and make sure that it meets all of our requirements. Um, are we comfortable that, within the definition, that we've sort of cast a big enough net over the material part of it itself? Like, we, you know, we, we spelled out, I guess, brick, stone, concrete, wood, or similar, but, you know, I don't, I don't know how big that needs to be or whatever, if we pretty much have covered ourselves through that? More of a comment maybe than a question, but I-
I think staff has tracked similar language in our codes. And that is, uh, kind of nomenclature for describing, um, outdoor storage of materials. And again, the distinction is material, you know, more of a raw material than, um, implements or, you know, trailers.
Equipment or something.
Plus, plus, this, this is a principal use too. Um, so if there's a business in town that has, let's just say they do pallets of something else that's not on here, ancillary to that business, it would still be allowed even though it might not be brick, stone, concrete, whatever.
And, and the key philosophical thing is that the storage must be related to the underlying business that's on the property.
Right.
Okay. Um, reading between the lines, does this create a legal non-conforming situation?
Uh, for that, that, for that particular permit, I would agree.
Just curious, since they've already applied for the permit, are they-
It's built.
It was issued, so it's issued, so they-
It's issued.
Yes.
If they were just to continue that use, then, uh, this would become active.
Or if they would try to modify it.
Uh, that's correct.
So they're, they're basically grandfathered in right now?
They are. In my understanding, it is taking material also.
I didn't get a chance to draw that in, yeah. Alright, I'll open the floor to the public. Anybody from the public care to make a comment on this one? Am I close the floor to the public? Unless there's further discussion, um, a recommendation to the village board, um, for this change in definition as presented would be in order?
A motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of the Village of Gurnee for an amendment to the text Article two point one, definition of general terms, and Article eight point two, use of, use standards as proposed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Nordentoff. Roll call, please?
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Alright, the, the final, um, amendment, um, presentation, uh, has to do with design standards.
Yep. So, there's two parts to this one. The first one is, um, that we've had multiple commercial users that have had issues with our design standards. Uh, and the most common one is the percentage of transparency on the first floor. Code requires that for buildings in the C-one and C-two district, the first floor between two and ten feet above grade must maintain a minimum transparency of fifty percent. And then the C-three district establishes this threshold at forty percent. Um, and then there's a few different users that have gone through special use permits. Aldi's has, Raising Canes has as well. Um, there are a number of factors for why they've said that they haven't been able to meet it. Just the type of business, the number of street frontages the building has, or even the size. Uh, just make it so that, uh, these operations can't have windows. Maybe they have a back-of-house area along certain frontages. Um, and so, uh, the current process for departing from this requirement, as well as other design standards that are in the ordinance, is a special use permit, which requires a public hearing. Staff looked at trying to figure out a lower transparency threshold and basically, kind of, thought that something that might be easier is just making it so that the design standards are something that the Planning and Zoning Board can authorize a modification of. And this is similar, kind of, to that parking modification that we discussed earlier. And we actually used very similar language to that. And that language is, uh, just adding to the design standards, the first paragraph of that section, that the Planning and Zoning Board may authorize a modification, reduction, or waiver of these requirements if it finds that, in the particular case, the peculiar nature of the use, the exceptional shape or size of the property and/or building, or other exceptional situation or condition would justify such action. Um, and so that is the first change that's proposed. And that would, again, make it so that a special use permit isn't required and just a modification that would be, uh, reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board would replace that process. And then the second proposed amendment is specific to the C-four Village Center District. When an application came in recently for the C-four district, staff became aware that the architectural standards that were referenced, uh, with the zoning ordinance update in twenty fifteen tied the C-four, um, appearance back to the C-two community commercial standards. And these are more commercial in nature, which is the opposite of the village's intent for that district, which is the promotion of buildings that maintain the residential character of the area. Also, the setbacks that were noted in the district didn't reflect the fact that these setbacks should be taken into- Also, the setbacks that were noted in the district didn't reflect the fact that these setbacks should be taken into consideration and reviewed and determined via the special use process. And that these protections were put into place in the previous zoning ordinance, um, but were not included in the update. And this is because the area is principally a residential area. And as those are the only uses allowed by right, um, anything that's non-residential requires a special use permit. And so the changes that we're proposing, uh, are, in the notes, it basically is going to be changed from saying that, um, that, uh, any structure originally designed for residential use that is expanded or converted to a non-residential use must maintain the existing residential character of the structure. Any new structure constructed for a non-residential use must reflect the residential character of the area. And that the quality of exterior design must be equal on all facades of the structure and the materials on all facades must be of the same or comparable quality. And so, uh, that is the change to the first section of that, and then the second would just be adding that building and parking setbacks for all non-residential uses will be determined during the special use permit hearing process, taking into consideration the existing building and parking driveway setbacks of properties abutting the subject property and properties located directly across the street and alley when applicable.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave. Yeah, um, on section one of this, um, I think this makes a lot of sense, cause I, I know we've sat through a couple of different meetings where, you know, some of these petitioners have been challenged on this transparency and design standard side of it, and, and truthfully, I, I think if we have to drag that through a special use process, it's not necessarily a good use of village resources, you know, in a public hearing process and everything like that, where I think, in my opinion anyway, I think this body, generally speaking, has the capability and the ability to, to, to manage that part of it, the process and do a, a fine job on behalf of the village and making those determinations, whether those waivers and changes can be allowed, uh, without adding that extra layer and, and tapping into those extra uh, resources, I, I just don't know that that's really necessary, uh, so I think that from an efficiency standpoint, I think it's, it's a good move. Um, on part two, uh, after, after a recent petition that we had come through here, um, having the zoning or, ordinance be aligned properly for that, uh, Village Center District would have made that process just a little, maybe a little easier, a little easier for us to manage through, um, if the, if the language had actually been in alignment with what we interpret, what we believed it was to, to, to be in line and that would, uh, and stay residential in character and whatnot, so, uh, again, maybe more from a housekeeping standpoint, it just makes it so that we're a little more lock solid on that and say we, we lean on this because it's, you know, it's, it's now aligned properly, so.
Perfectly in agreement.
Yeah, I mean, just further to what you said about the first part, I mean, staff and, and the planning and zoning board, they're gonna, they're gonna do the same steps and review. Um, it, it just takes it from a public hearing to a public meeting.
Right.
Um, and takes significant, significant time out of the timetable. Okay, um, I'm gonna open the floor to the public, any, any comments or questions? If not, I'll close the floor to the public, um, unless there's further discussion, um, a recommendation to the village board, um, for the commercial district design standards amendment, uh, as presented would be in order?
A motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of the village of Gurnee for an amendment to the text of article five point four, uh, commercial design standards as proposed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nordentoff, um, roll call please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next meeting on the calendar is for September twenty-one, are we gonna have a meeting?
We don't have any public hearing items, but we could have a non-public hearing item that comes up possibly.
So stay tuned.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm gonna open the floor to the public for any comments for things that were not on this evening's agenda? Close the floor to the public, um, just a, a comment, um, great job staff in terms of pulling this together and of a clear, concise manner of, we covered a lot of territory in thirty-five minutes.
We did.
That's because of the, the great work that you guys did.
Thank you.
So a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Motion by Mr. Nordentoff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Campbell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thanks everyone.